Good afternoon. Today is Thursday, August the 23rd, 2019. And it's about two minutes past three. And we're going to start our Board of Commissioners meeting for the Housing Authority with the roll call.
Chairman Lewis.
Present.
Vice Chair Rose.
Here.
Commissioner Obachowski.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Adair. Commissioner Turnbull.
Present.
Commissioner Chinoweth.
Present.
Next, I would like to entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Go move.
Second.
Chairman Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rose.
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Chinoweth.
Yes.
Carrie here. This is for the public out there. Here's an opportunity for you to have comment on the agenda item only. No comment from the public. I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to re-approve the minutes of the regular meeting.
A second with a change. I just want to note the change. Esther Pat has an H and Kyle Patterson has two Ts, which is not that big of a deal. But Highland is actually Alan Axelrod. A-L-L-A-N Axelrod. And Martell Williams is Martell Miller. He has one L and then it's Miller. So if we could just reflect the public input, that would be helpful.
Have a motion to adopt the corrected minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Chairman Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rose.
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Adair. Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Chinoweth.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the enrichment foundation bylaws.
So basically, basically each board has to have a certain bylaws so they can follow the correct policies when they're making decisions. With the creation of our new non-for-profit, the enrichment foundation, we needed bylaws. And those bylaws will have to be approved, one by the housing authorities board and then by the foundations board.
Who's on the foundation board?
At this point, we just got to have an advisory board. I can't remember all the names. Do you have the list with you, Lilly? Of the advisory board members? But I'll make sure we send an email out to all the board members. I was just, we were just talking about making sure it's with us tonight so we can recognize all board members that's at the event on both sides of the line. But at this point, we didn't have a solid board because we didn't have any bylaws. So we did the advisory board till we can get a process in place. And then we started looking for board members. And again, we want to recruit board members a little different from the housing authorities' normal board members because the foundations' job is to help raise funds and advocate for the housing authority and, well, the foundation in a different way to help benefit our clients and our program. Give them opportunities for scholarships and education and enrichment opportunities also.
Any other questions? Like to have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the enrichment foundation bylaws?
Second.
Chairman Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rose.
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Adair. Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Chinoweth.
Next is Chief Executive Officer to report.
Thank you, sir. First, we'll start, I'll allow Tiffany to take, Ms. Gonzalez, to take care of the employee of the month presentation.
I had to look and say, who is that? I'm so used to Danny. Daniel Sprouse, Danny, was nominated for employee of the month by Lilly Walton. It was because of his willingness to always help out in whatever situation. In addition to his willing spirit, Danny is always smiling whenever you see him. He is truly a pleasure to work with. And he has that smile with him now. Come on, Danny. Lilly's going to take a picture of you. Well, you have front and center, right?
You don't want to be his picture?
Of course.
Messing with her now because I know she don't like. But why are you guys taking this picture? I want to say a couple of things. And I know a supervisor may want to say, oh, it changed now. Not the supervisor no more. All right, well, I'll take that part. Robin's not here right now, so I'll take that part. You know, when I first came here at the housing authority, you know, with every new leader, whatever it is, you have to see your properties that you manage. And so I took the time and the opportunity to go around and see all the properties. And Danny took me around Oakwood Terrace and we had a great time. I mean, we probably out there almost two hours. I saw every in and out of it and it was great. So, you know, the detail that he puts in terms of making sure the property is taken care of, the extra efforts that he does when it comes to helping out with our community activities, helping put up tables or whatever it is, is just, it's just great. And I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you like to say anything?
I just want to thank you all. Appreciate it.
Okay, before I go into the complete report, I just want to again acknowledge our chairman who is retiring at the end of this board meeting. We inviting all the board members out to our activity tonight at Neal Street Blues is called, what is it called?
Dollars for Scholars.
Dollars for, I always wanted to say Party with a Purpose. It's called Dollars for Scholars. And that's kind of what it is, Party with a Purpose. And that, that activity is fun and it's great to have some loud music. All the receipts in terms of the food, the foundation receives 20% of it. So the partnership that we're working with Neal Street to help support our clients is in a great way. And we'll be having, we hope the board members will come out and we can help celebrate Reverend Lewis as he decides to depart. He had a celebration at the church and on behalf of the housing authority and his board members, we presented him with this nice gavel that he truly enjoyed. Now, he'd probably laugh again, but his celebration, we presented him with a couple of other things. One was a lifetime voucher, just in case he needed, you know, we signed it, we gave it to him in a frame, just in case now, we got him covered. He was a chairman for a number of years. And also, we presented his wife with some Motrin because she's not used to him being retired. And so we want to make sure that she's okay also. So it's a, it's a family package. So we just want to really say that we appreciate you, I know on behalf of the board and the rest of the staff and our clients that serve. I've been here a short time and through that time, you've been extremely supportive whenever we needed you or whatever, I had to call about any issue or any reason. If you heard something out in the community that was important, you showed up at the door to ensure that we was working on those issues. And so I just want to say I appreciate you and that you enjoy your retirement and, you know, don't make your wife have to use that Motrin. Would you like to say anything, sir?
I guess since I always tell everybody else who's receiving a presentation to say something, now it's my turn, I guess it's only fair play that I would say something in return. First of all, I would, I am thankful for the opportunity to have served Champaign County, entire county, on behalf of the housing authority. And I'm grateful for a board, a cohesive board, progressive thinking board, that we were able to accomplish a lot of things with the help of the city. It's always good to have the backing of the, of the city and you're moving in the same direction in order to make people lives better. Mixed feeling that I'm leaving this community as well as the board. I'm known to some of you, I attended here and got my undergraduate degree from the University of Illinois in Champaign. Four best years of my life. Enjoyed it. Never thought that I would come back to this city. But when I was ordained as a minister, my ordination took place in this city. And then I came back to pastor church here, served on numerous boards, and now I am retired in the city of Champaign, Nevada. And I would just like to say thank all of you. It's been a pleasure working with you. And I'm thankful for all the great things that we was able to accomplish. And just, to me, it seemed like a short period of time. And to me, it seemed like we have not accomplished that much because there's yet so much to be accomplished. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you again, sir. I just want to go over a couple of things that I believe is important besides the report that has sent out with the annual, I mean, the monthly board report. As you know, we're doing a lot of fundraising activities. We're doing more community engagement, especially with our young people. We've had a host of meetings over the last few, the last month, but also over the last year or so. And, you know, one thing I'm happy about that we really have not had to divert any funds really related to housing families because we have a great community that support the housing authority and its goals and its missions, that care about its clients that we serve, and vendors and contractors that, you know, we help keep in business, that's giving back. And that's one of the reasons that we decided to create the foundation because we know that with the HUD money alone, HUD disinvested in the services of clients when they eliminated, especially for young people, eliminated drug elimination. So that's something that's very important. And if we want to move our families along that spectrum, we have to focus on the whole family, not just the 18 to 54-year-old. And so I just want to go over a few numbers that we have. All our events that we've had this year so far, well, since we started doing those type of activities, we probably raised over $3,000, which, you know, to the point of the housing authority didn't really have to contribute anything to those individuals that cared and want to be a part of that. And that's cash amounts. The other item, donation items, when we had the homeless Super Bowl party, it was a number of people that came to the table to provide sweaters, hats, gloves, toiletries, food, all type of things. And, you know, I just want to say I appreciate the community. I knew it was something that we can get done and accomplish because people care about our mission and the clients that we serve. The gala, now that's October 12th. We're still looking for sponsors. We're still looking for people to come. It'd be a great evening of fun, raising more money to help benefit our clients directly, and also awarding some nice, giving some nice partners in the community that help promote or help work with our clients to move along that spectrum, a few awards. And so I'm happy to say that based on the commitment of sponsorship so far, all of our expenses that we had allocated for the gala so far has been paid for. Right now, just in sponsorships, we still have another number of commitments that didn't give us a number. We have 23, like $24,000 in commitments for sponsorships for the gala. And it costs quite less than that to put it on. And then that's before we sell any tickets, before the raffle tickets, before all the other expenses that we may be able to gain. The gala will be top-notch, it's in a beautiful location. And, you know, I'm not advocating drinking, but just to make sure it's a fun night. So we do have an open bar that'd be for three hours that night, soda and wine and beer, I believe. So, you know, I'm just excited about the outpouring of support that we've been able to receive from the community members, our contractors. And again, this money goes toward opportunity access and scholarships to our residents that we serve. And it's important because we want to make sure the individuals know that this organization is a top-quality organization and that we message ourselves in that way. And so I appreciate everybody and I'm looking forward to everybody in this room being there. Next, I just want to mention that we're doing something a little different and trying to really reach our clients. And so we have a couple of pamphlets that we put together and we'll be getting them printed out soon. And those pamphlets are for our clients that we serve and it focuses on three main factors. One is healthcare resources. So we compiled the healthcare resources in the county, resources for seniors and people with disabilities. We have a pamphlet for that. And then we know that it's a number of individuals suffer with mental illness. We can tell about what's going on in the country, but also what's going on in our own communities. And so we have a pamphlet about that so we can ensure that our clients, or people we serve, or staff at times, that have issues or concerns, we have that information in their fingerprints where they can just reach out, grab it and get the services and things they need. So I appreciate the staff. I think it was LSS, Tiffany orchestrated that, for putting that together for us. Last few items I just want to mention, as far as grants, we have a letter of interest sent out for the VASH vouchers so we can apply for more VASH vouchers. Those are vouchers for veterans. We submitted a youth bill grant. This is our second submission, so we're looking at receiving that, which will help our young people and help our community overall as a whole. We in the process of finalizing our mainstream vouchers, our second round of mainstream vouchers application in partnership with RPC and that's to serve individuals specifically targeted with disabilities. And then we're finalizing a state reentry grant. The state came out with a program about reentry and they called us and asked us will we participate? We just have to fill out the grant, which is quite lengthy, so, but we're in the final stages of doing that so we can move forward with that grant opportunity. We had our affordable housing panel, the first one came out amazingly great. We had over 70 people show up, all showed up and did a great job. Carrie, one of our panelists is here today. We had, the feedback that we received was amazing. You know, it was just, it was great to hear individuals sit and speak based on their experience or their focus as it relates to their jobs or elected status on housing and affordable housing. And the community members was engaged and very excited about that. We have two more panels coming up by the end of this year. Our next one will be around criminal background policy, which we said and mentioned that we'll have a panel together to start discussing that, to bring up those issues, to see if we want to come back to the table later on. We haven't selected, you know, advisory committee or anything to work on it as of yet. But the panel, we start sending our invitations for individuals to be on that panel. Our third panel that we hope to have this year is another affordable housing panel. And we want to have different panelists on there because we want to get the understanding from all of the counties. So we have a number of rural counties, cities, or villages represented, state senator, county government, townships, and, you know, other individuals or organizations that was not, that was not on that first panel. We want to make sure everybody's heard and have an opportunity to be heard. As far as presentations, we have a couple of presentations coming up. We did one last Wednesday at the community coalition meeting, which has a lot of good vibes about it. We did it on MTW and talked about our development. A lot of individuals in our county and we have to continually make sure we understand and message it correctly that they don't understand what MTW is or understand what we do as a housing authority. And so, you know, going out there messaging and ensuring that whenever somebody asks, we're at the table to give that information is important and we continually do so. Tuesdays coming up, the city of Champaign is having a study session that they usually have with the city council and the city representatives. We'll be presenting on the MTW and our development and ensuring that the city officials understand our programs in an efficient way. And the partnership that we have with Bristol residents is something that's very interested and they're very interested in. And I think Carrie wanted to say a couple of words related to that.
If I could, I first wanted to say thank you to Reverend Lewis because you've been here a while in Bristol Place. You know, the whole board is a part of that, but specifically you and Jim Rose as our representatives, thank you for that. Our community is a better place and I know you're leaving, but you can always hold on to that. We appreciate your work. And I wanted to give a quick thank you to David and Tiffany who have spent a lot of time with me lately. First of all, making sure I understand moving to work and I appreciate it and I still have a lot to learn. But we've worked together to put together our council package that will be published on, it'll be available tomorrow. There's a memo written and it attaches your entire moving to work plan from the housing authority and your evaluation. That study session is at seven o'clock. At 5:00 PM, we're actually going to do our annual CIP, Capital Improvements Project tour. And Bristol Place will be the first stop that the bus tours makes. And so I know some people will be on the bus and some people will be actually at Bristol Place. We'll actually take off our entire city council, we'll get off the bus and tour Bristol Place as well as the Boneyard Creek. So thank you for that. So just quickly, the other thing I want to thank Tiffany and David for me with spending some time with me and my staff is as we look for Bristol Place, kind of the last catch-all was, the last issue to resolve was the homeownership piece. And so thank you for the 84 vouchers that you're putting into the Bristol Place this phase, project-based vouchers. All along, we've had a goal of homeownership and I know that's more of a goal for the city. The housing authority has really done its part by putting those vouchers in place. And so we're hoping late September to come back to, we'll go to city council study session to discuss a plan, a program, if you will. And we've just started putting kind of the early touches on it, but some of the, I just wanted to raise some of the issues that we know we all want to see Bristol succeed, but you're a countywide housing authority. I appreciate your resources are limited. We want to make sure that it's sustainable, that we encourage people to self-sufficiency, but that in year 15, that people have that ability to purchase. So with that, knowing that you have to lease for 15 years, you have to wait, we understand that your local self-sufficiency program has an eight-year term limit. And so we've been working with David and Tiffany, talking about how does that, how do we transition people then from year nine to year 15? If you move in this year with our massive waiting list, people that move in, if they really want to stay, how do we help them successfully get to year 15? And with that comes a couple of issues. Number one, right sizing. We, you know, you have a policy and so we're trying to figure out the city, how can we partner together to make sure that if someone, over 15 years, someone's household size will change more than likely? How can we, how can the city be involved into making sure that people get to stay? And then I think the last thing I really wanted to say is, you know, the more that I learn, and it is, it is, I've spent a long time talking to Tiffany too, it's complicated. I'm a HUD person, but from the community and planning and development side, you guys are on the PIH side. And sometimes those things aren't exact, we don't have, we have similar goals, but they're a little different. So the thing I keep coming back to is we want Bristol Place to be a neighborhood, not an apartment community. We want it to be a neighborhood. We want it to be stable. We want to make sure that we provide economic opportunity for the residents, your residents, our citizens. And then in the end, that we're really encouraging people to get towards that self-sufficiency. And, and then I think, similar to when we did phase one of Bristol, and I said this in the, in the panel also, at the end of the day, we're going to have people that are in Bristol and out, but we've created a lot more housing than what existed there before. And it's going to be up-to-code, sustainable, more energy-efficient. And so at the end of the day, we just keep holding on to that. And even though the conversation sometimes is difficult, I think, I think we're going to get there. So thank you to David and stay tuned.
Yes, I want to address the part about the eight-year term. I wanted to bring that up anyway, revisiting that from eight years because eight years, some people are not ready to be flying yet. So that's a term that we want to revisit.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Carrie. I just want to add that we did open a Bristol waiting list for one day and just so that the board members can clearly understand what's going on. The individuals that was relocated, they have first right to return. So it was 42 people on the list that we have. 32 of those people expressed interest at this time, so they're number one on the list. And we plan on ensuring that the other 10, if they would decide to come back at any time, they get that chance until all apartments, excuse me, until all units are leased up. Once all units are leased up, those individuals, you know, will not have an opportunity to come back. That means they avoided the opportunity to come back. So we just want to make sure we continually articulate that to the community. The city has been working with a number of those residents and I'm happy that a lot of them already expressed interest to come back. In that short timeframe that we opened the waiting list, we had over 900 applicants on that list. And just think about having, if the 42 people decide to return, we, and we have 900 applicants. It's only like 50 units left, less than 50 units left that we have to serve those individuals. So the need is tremendous. But the big thing is not just being, having the need that's tremendous. The way that development was put together, the way it looked, people are excited about it and that's what's important. You know, I wish we could house everybody on that 900 list. Unfortunately, we can't, but we can continually work throughout the county and try to make that possible. So again, thank you for those words, Carrie, and I look forward to seeing you on Tuesday.
My only concern about the Bristol Place is that the people that moved out, they had provided to move them back in before anybody else do. And my only concern about that is that a lot of those people that were moved out was for a reason because that environment was degrading. So we're going to move those people back in and then it's going to do the same thing unless we really protect that environment because most of them that was in that environment are going to move back to the environment. And that's what I'm.
The only thing, Commissioner, was not to create the same community that we just tore down, but to transform the community and to make it more stable so that you would not have the community to deteriorate. But it would, people would keep their property and not only that, is moving them toward home ownership. Before you move them toward home ownership, you, they're going to receive the appropriate training of how to take care of their property as well as the assistance. And so you're not going to have that same type of environment. It's a different type of environment altogether.
I just have one quick question. What type of tracking system or what do you have in your database that, that we know the people that have the opportunity to come back in? How do you, how do you keep up on that?
With any opportunity in terms of relocating individuals, by law, the relocation plan, we're required to keep in touch with those individuals. They're not required to keep in touch with us, so if they decide not to respond, we can't help it. But the city's done an amazing job in keeping in touch with everybody. And we continually share lists and work with the city so that what they know, we know, and what we know, they know. And so we have that complete list of who was there. I wasn't there when it was relocated, but I'm confident that we have the right individuals on that list based on Carrie and her staff and what they've been able to do. But just adding to what Reverend Lewis, our chairman person, had mentioned around that, one of the things that, you know, and again, I wasn't there, but I can only assume based on my experiences running housing authorities for 20-some years and dealing with community development, that situation, it was only about two or three subsidized units in there in a sense of public housing units. Some of those, it was two of them. The rest of the units was homeowners or renters that was there. And some of the pictures of the community and how it looked before the relocation and demolition occurred draws in individuals that's less desirable or want to tear down communities or sell drugs or do all that kind of stuff. Anybody coming back, whether they have the first right to refuse or not, has to go through certain programs in terms of, they have to be eligible. They have to also, they're in our MTW program, so that mean that we're watching them and dealing with them and helping them and giving them resources so they can overcome obstacles if they need that. And so between the city, and the city's staying engaged with that also because, you know, they're, they're one of the investors in their property also. So I totally feel that we'd be able to accomplish the goal of keeping the property in great condition and dealing with any issues as they arise. I can't say it'd be perfect, but we, I think we, the plan we have is working in the right direction.
Your office is just on the street, I think it's a position.
Oh, yeah, that helps too. And the investment that the Prague District and Human Kinetics with the Martin Center come in there, I think it's, you know, I think everybody sees this as a great opportunity to reinvent that community and bring some great housing there for the citizens.
I'm assuming now all 42 people who want to come back to Bristol will be able to? Is that true?
They have, like David said, they have to pass the tenant selection criteria.
So they do have to be screened.
They're invited, they have the right to come back.
Okay.
But they do have to pass all the same things, so.
Another issue may be a person who lived in Bristol before was in a two or three-bedroom house or whatever the case may be. Now they're a single person wanting to come back or we have no single bedroom unit, so they would probably not be able to come back to Bristol.
Most families that we work with have more than one person, but that is true. At this time, there are no one bedrooms, but the second phase, the second phase we have is going to be apartments.
Sure.
So there may be an opportunity later.
Okay, thank you.
Carrie, a question. Do you know how many single individuals, one bedrooms, that was moved out or that's something you can answer later?
I answered that one.
Thank you.
There were various two apartments. There was one for using apartment buildings that I recall. Everything else was a single-family home. Everything else was a single-family home or a new flat, so everything. So, most of the household, 10 or 14 people.
Okay, very good, very good. Any other questions about Bristol? Okay. Lastly, I just want to mention, the governor of Illinois just passed a number of policies. One was the policy to protect immigrant tenants from landlords and around discrimination. There's been a number of cases where some landlords had took the opportunity to abuse or misuse immigrant tenants just because they threatened them to take them, to report them to ICE or whatever. And so, I'm thankful that the governor stepped up and passed that policy, because we are totally against anybody being discriminated against in a way. And to have a family have to go through that is amazing. I have a couple, not only am I proud of that step to help eliminate abuse and discrimination and protect those families, but it's a few issues that we will have to deal with as a housing authority as time go along. HUD came out recent, last year with its proposed rule about the public charge, and that's around mixed-status families. We looked at our records, we didn't have any mixed-status families currently on our program at the time. But, you know, we can't just focus on our organization's housing throughout, and so, when I took a look at the numbers, we have over, that rule was a proposed rule, so it's not in effect as of yet. During a comment period, we had over 30,000 comments from across the nation. We send our comments in, and as an organization, so that we can be heard, that we're against that policy change, because it currently, it doesn't affect any cost of the housing authority, because that portion, the individuals that's not legally here, they pay a portion. They just, and we only, we prorate the rent where we only pay the portion of the individuals that's legally allowed to, you know, utilize those sources. My thing is that if we eliminate that, then we have some cases where we won't even know who's in our households. We won't know the number of people, because they won't tell us. Right now, they're willing to tell us, because we're able to protect them in the right way and still house them. And so, you know, excuse me, I'm against it. Some other data around that is, there's over 180,000 families throughout our nation that's on subsidized housing programs, public housing programs, not people, but families, right, that this plan affects. Our estimates through Public Housing Director Association, FADA, which I sit on a leadership role, we estimate close to $3 to $4 million that the housing authorities have to pay for eviction of individuals if that rule passed and is forced on us. The last thing I want to say about it, related to the federal versus state, so it's a gray area where that lies. Our state just passed a policy making it illegal. We are landlords, right? So, that mean we can't, by state law, we can't do it. Federal law saying we have to do it. And so, you know, the concern nationally is that, how do you deal with that gray area? You know, will HUD punish us by not allowing us to have our funding until we follow their rules? So, it's a lot of stuff we working out at the, at the level in Washington with our representatives and our policy staff at our industry group, so. But those are important questions that we need answers to as it relates to those families, if we still want to intend to protect those families. Last thing I just want to mention is that we have, we had our staff appreciation professional development day, it went off well. It was a great time out in the park, and staff enjoyed it, and Tiffany and I, along with other leadership members and volunteers, did a great job at serving, ensuring everybody was fed before we decided to sit down and eat ourselves. We had a HQS training last month from Mannequin Associates. Again, we're dedicated to ensuring our staff is trained and cross-trained on areas that needs training. That was a good opportunity where we allow others to come to those trainings to help offset the costs. We trained a number of residents on HQS. We waiting on the results to come back, and those are residents that we plan on helping develop businesses, opportunities in, in terms of inspections that we need to do, third-party inspections. But the RPC, I believe, sent some people over. At least three other housing authorities sent individuals to the housing authority to be trained. So, you know, having a training model that benefits our staff, our community, but also we're able to benefit others, and that cost can be offset, is a good thing. So, I was excited and happy about that. I think we have no more trainings this year, and next year, we'll start up training again. And so, I'll keep everybody up to date on those trainings. Unless any commissioners had a particular question about anything I said or anything they saw on our report that we sent out, we'll move on to the staff reports.
Staff report.
John?
I'll give just a real brief update. We submit our reports fairly early, and things progress really quickly. So, things are much further along than what's in your, your board report. So, at Bristol, Phase Four, we have all the single-family house foundations. Most of the houses are framed. We have all the multi-unit building foundations done. Phase Three, we have all the roofs on, we have 10 units framed. Clock Street is 100% complete. Phase Two is in the painting and drywall finishing stage. Phase One, we have all the siding and the flooring is, is well along the way. Site work, they're, they're doing the rough grade, and they're up to the utility installation part, which is totally dependent on Ameren's schedule. So, I'm, I'm not going to give any dates for that one. And it's going, it's going well. I think we're right on target for our lease updates. We should be fine there. At the Haven, Building Three, which is a special needs building, the one-story one in the back, painting's 100%, and they have the flooring going in. Building Two, which is the other 12 units, special needs, we're all weathered in, refins are done, and they're doing the taping and drywall currently. Building One is the senior building, framing's at about 50%. The foundation and first floor flooring are complete at this point. They've dug the last of the detention, and they're starting on the site work, and the roads, they started putting roads in this week. Pinewood Place, we had discussed, we were over budget there, and we've been doing some value engineering work, working with the architect and our engineers. We identified a list of items where we could make some changes to help reduce that cost and to help with, IDA's willing to increase the amount of money that they're going to give us, but we have to put a construction budget together first. And what we've done since, so, to help you understand value engineering, if you don't, currently, our design greatly exceeds code requirements, so we can back off of it a little bit and still be just fine. For instance, in the kitchen, we have a breakfast bar on an island with three independent, pendant lights over that. We got rid of the three individual lights, put in one fixture, saves $150 a unit times 24. So, it's that type of thing that we're working on, and at this point, I think we're complete, and we've identified $160,000 that we can, in cost reduction, without really affecting the quality of the buildings. And we'll be presenting that to IDA. We were to have a call today, but it got canceled, so we'll be presenting that to them this week and have a call next Tuesday. Questions?
Right now, IDA's without leadership. The exec director, IDA, left, so they have an interim now, and they're searching for a new director of IDA. So, I hope that don't have anything to do with our delay, but I'm sure they're going to work with us and allow us to move forward with our development. I've had the opportunity to take a number of site visits at both Bristol and Haven. If any commissioners want to take site visits and see the progress that's going on, let me know. We can schedule it with John, so that we can get out there and take a look at those properties. It's very interesting to see, and, you know, one of the things that's important that we all care about is that the diversity that's out there, no, no matter what the day is that I stop by a property and talk to people, you see a diverse working, diverse staff of individuals working out there. And so, that's good to see a representative of different races out there working, which also represent our community. So, thanks a lot, John, for that hard work, keeping the contractors and everybody on pace and exceeding our numbers in terms of minority participation and disadvantaged businesses, women-owned and veteran businesses. Next, could we have Tamika come up, please, for the voucher program?
Just a couple of updates from the reports that were provided. For the operational report, I know it says for the waitlist, 1633, that number has gone down some to 1611. And so, right now, we only have 30 remaining from the 2016 waitlist for the tenant base program. We're just waiting on some documents from those applicants. And then, we have 81 left for the mainstream, and 50 eligibility packets have gone out so far for the, from the new waitlist that was from June of 2019. And out of those 50, so far, we have received 15. So, we are working on those as well. And then, for the utilization, the update for that one, mainstream, I know it says 17 have been occupied. That number has gone up. We are at 20, and we do have three packets in progress for inspections. And so, we'll hopefully be at 23 before the end of this month, and so, we'll still have five. They're still searching for housing, so.
Any questions for Tamika? Okay, well, thanks a lot, Tamika. Tiffany, would you step in for Robin, because she's out, and also mention maybe some LSS stuff too, if you have anything to add? I know I took up some of the glory by showing you leaflets and flyers and stuff, but you can add anything if you have it.
I'll make up for that time. So, for our property management report, Oakwood Trace completed the month with a 98% occupancy rate. Manor at Prairie completed the month with 100% occupancy rate, and Maple Grove was at 73% occupancy rate. We currently have 403 individuals on the waiting list for Oakwood Trace, and for Manor at Prairie, we have 26 on the waiting list. Those numbers have come up quite a bit. For our Rad portfolio, at Washington Square, we have an occupancy rate of 96. At Stair Place, we have an occupancy rate of 94. Yeoman, I'm sorry, Yeoman, we have an occupancy rate at 100%. Columbia, 94%. And Hayes, 100%. We currently have, on our Washington Place waiting list, 84 families. Stair Place, 392. Yeoman, 61. Columbia, 74. And Hayes, 376. For our LSS NTW department, we are currently working on our NTW annual plan. We are planning to have that completed by October. And so, Mr. Morden mentioned the inspection program, so that is something that will be added to that program. We are working with LSS to work, we're working with LSS to do a lot of, much more outreach to our participants. We completed the month of July with 590 households. Those households, with adult household members, were 753. We have 26 families that were issued a 90-day compliance, 90 days to get into compliance. We have seven of those families that are currently participating in a job training or certificate program. We have 85 individuals with student waivers, GED, or college exemptions. We have 484 of those families that are unemployed, 41 with medical waivers. We have about 47 that are exempt due to disability. We have the age exemption of, there's 24 families. We have 13 families that are the sole caregivers, so therefore, they're exempt as well. We had one termination for non-compliance, and we had 25 referrals for the month of July. Also, our LSS department is out in the community during the month. We participated in a financial literacy workshop with Heartland Bank. We participated with Habitat for Humanity, as well as the Emergency Family Shelter Steering Committee. We, we are at WorkNet on every Tuesday, assisting families there. And we also participate in the continuum of care and the reentry council. Any questions?
Nope. Thanks a lot, Tiffany. Matt, would you mind coming up, please, to give a financial report? And while Matt's coming to the podium, this goes along with finance, but also, I guess, with development. Next week, we have a solar energy initiative that's happening here, where the individuals will be here and inviting the community in to hear about the opportunities around solar energy related to lower-income individuals. So, I get the actual date and times out to the board members, so if they decide to stop by, they can. And if they go, anybody go to our website, they can see it on our calendar that it's set to be here. I believe that time starts at 4:30 or 4 o'clock, but I'll make sure we confirm the exact time that the solar energy initiative is taking place next week.
First thing I want to go over is the cash disbursements for the month of July. A total of $307,273.83. And on the checklisting report, I just wanted to highlight a few items. On page 15 of the report, there's an amount to Tyson and Billy Architects for $75,122.40, and that was for architectural design for Pinewood Place. Also on page 15, University of Illinois, $43,480.04. That's for their moving-to-work evaluation for the month of June, but that was higher than normal. There was some, because of the university's fiscal year-end, they had to include half a month into that month's billing, as well as it included some summer salary, as well as a NARO conference that they presented at. So, expenses related to that. On page 17, Cindy Hereran Associates for $49,500. That was per contract monthly fee for the months, March through June. So, that was $12,000 for that monthly fee, and then, a number of contract deliverables. So, one was the 2018 Annual NTW Report Completion Submission. That was a deliverable for $15,000. And then, Lytech applications for the, for 9% for LAD, Robinson, and Newton. That was a total of $22,500 for those deliverables. Any questions on the checklisting report?
And just to add to that, we did, you know, work and negotiate to decrease the contract, so we have saved, we will be saving tremendously on a contract long-term. Right now, we still have some billing going on, because there's a lot of construction in terms of development activities happening with the closings of all these tax credit properties.
And then, on the, the budget-to-actual comparison for July, just to highlight a few things. One on the HAP funding line under the Housing Trace voucher, it's just over $2 million. Normally, that's between $900,000 and $1 million, but that, that revenue is recognized based on what we're actually dispersed, and we were able to, because of HUD's cash management policies, they hold on to the amount of money that they don't think we need that month for expenses and keep the remaining eligibility. We had some expenses that we needed to pay out, and so, we'd requested additional money, so that's why that was higher for the month, requesting additional $1 million over what's, over what's normally dispersed. Some of the higher expenses, I had mentioned, on the second page, there's related to the NTW evaluation consulting, and there was another consulting expense for the LAD project, some additional training and travel related to the Illinois-Indiana NARO Conference. There were two board members, three staff that attended that. There was also Phases One and Two of the salary study that we had done. The cost of that was $7,840. That was paid in July. And also, $1,800 to the City of Urbana for the Urbana Public Television Annual Membership Fee that we pay to have the, the meetings recorded and broadcast. Any questions on that?
Thanks a lot, Matt. That's the end of our report, so now we're at number seven on our agenda.
Black have a motion for the approval of the financial reports.
I'll make a motion to approve financial reports, July 2019, cash dispersments and detailed checklisting, July 2019, budget-to-actual.
Second.
Chairman Lewis. Vice Chair Rose. Commissioner Ovachowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Chinoweth.
Yes.
Next, we have public comment on non-agenda items. Are none? I would like to.
On none, I would like to entertain a motion for a closed session for A, discussion of hiring, finding, or continued employment of a specific employee, and D, discussion of purchase sale price of real property to be acquired, and if there's no action to be taken afterwards, to adjourn.
No action, sir.
Need a motion? I make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss Items A and D, with no action to be taken, and adjournment to follow.
Second.
Rob Hall.
Chairman Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rose.
Yes.
Commissioner Ovchowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Chenoweth.